Good morning, we want to welcome everyone to the Lyon County Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty five. It's nine a m. If this is at the Lyon County Administrative Complex, twenty seven South Main Street, Yearnton, Nevada. Have a couple of things to read that we always read before uh the we get started on the. Lead of the meeting, uh planning commission meetings are open to the public and members of the public may attend in person and the meetings are also virtual. And the public may attend via virtual Zoom. Public comment, Lyon County allows the following alternatives for public comment. If you are attending the virtual Zoom meeting, public comment may be provided by raising your hand and requesting to provide public comment. This can occur in several ways, including. Dialing star nine from your phone to raise your hand and request to speak for public comment to unmute yourself dial star six. You can also provide public comment for this meeting by sending an email to county clerks at lion dash county dot org. The day prior to the posted meeting date, be sure to type public comment on the subject line. Written public comments may also be mailed to the Lyon County Community Development Office at twenty seven South Main Street, Yearnton, Nevada. Eight nine four four seven, but all public comments must be received prior to the date of the meeting if the comments are to be included in the supplemental materials. Any written public comment received the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials. To the county's website and distributed to the planning commission within twenty four hours after the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person at the Greg on a will Lyon County Commission Chambers, twenty seven South Main Street, Yearing to the Yearing to Nevada. So on to the agenda. Action will be taken on on all items unless otherwise noted, no action will be taken on any item unless it is properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration, items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place and manner of the comments, but may not restrict the comments based upon viewpoint. So let's do a roll call. Commissioner Lewis. Commissioner Sel. Mister Allen. Mister Eric, Mister Joe.
I'm here.
And I'm here and I understand that Commissioner Sosa will try to attend uh via Zoom if she can. She's out of state. So, but that is a quorum. Okay, and let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll go ahead and leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, where the liberty and justice for all.
Next time on the agenda, number three is public participation. No action will be taken on it unless it is properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium. And speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record and to sign and print their name uh on the form at the lectern. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic. The commission reserves the right to reduce this three minute time limit as well as limit the total time for public comment. If your item requires extended discussion, please request the chair to calendar the matter for a future planning commission meeting. The planning commission will not restrict comments based on viewpoint. The same applies to public testimony on each agenda item. The chairman reopened public participation at any time during the meeting. No action will be taken upon a matter raised under the. The item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. So item for review and adoption of the agenda as submitted for possible action.
That we accept today's agenda.
Second.
Any comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, call for a vote, all in favor of adopting the agenda as submitted, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstained. Yeah, that passes six to zero. Okay, item number five for possible action approval of the minutes. This is to approve the minutes from the June tenth, twenty twenty five meeting. And does anybody have any additions or corrections or change?
Just the one.
Commissioner Jones.
Uh, on number nine there, uh. The uh chairman and myself, we did not attend a meeting, we attend a fundraiser.
For.
Uh, for Sister Tower. On number nine.
Okay. Anything else? Yeah, any public comment or discussion on the agenda, I mean on the minutes, excuse me. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And extensions hearing none, that passes six to zero also.
The minutes without correction.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you have any advisory reports? I didn't see any in the packet. We're okay. So we have none of those. And we'll move on to our public hearing items, uh starting with seven A. This is for possible action. To forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for the request from Microsoft Corporation. For a master plan amendment to amend the master plan designation from employment to commercial on approximately twenty one acres. Of a two hundred and forty three point five acre parcel in Silver Springs located north of highway US highway fifty. A T N zero one five dash one four one dash one three P L Z two zero two five dash zero two six staff report please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Good morning, Commissioners Lewis, Harry, Ella, Seater, Planner, presenting. So the subject parcels located in Silver Springs, we see in the left here, the vicinity map showing the location uh north of highway fifty. And rest of the traffic circles, but the traffic circle for highway ninety five A, highway fifty. On the right, we can see the full parcel configuration. The subject parcel in its entirety is uh two hundred and forty nine point five nine acres in size for the county assessors. Estimation and only twenty one acres as read into the record with the description. Uh, it's proposed for amendments. Uh, we'll see that in graphics coming forward. The site is vacant and. The end up maintenance yard that we see in the north side of highway fifty is noted there uh. Surrounded on the west, north and east uh by this Microsoft parcel. Getting into the master plan designation, uh this area of Silver Springs is within the suburban character district. Uh suburban character districts are differentiate themselves from rural districts and that was often. Uh public utilities available. In this case, we have the Silver Springs Mutual Water Company. And uh the Silver Springs G I D uh in the area for service, the the parcel is within. The water districts uh service area, uh but only a portion is within. Uh the Silver Springs G I D districts service boundary currently uh for sewer. Uh the designation for the master plan is employment. And that is what is being proposed for amendments. Um moving to the zoning, uh the applicable zoning here is service industrial. Uh just a couple of years ago, Microsoft did change uh the zoning here for these parcels to service industrial. Uh and then I did want to make note just to the north of the subject parcel. Uh is a location for the Silver Springs Technology Park. Uh so that's a a large project that you would have seen uh over the previous months. I think we first started that process to the end of twenty four. Uh finished it here early twenty five. But there is now a consistency of the service industrial zoning uh in this area. Uh I did want to note that there is a a graphic error uh in the staff report. Uh the property to the east. We see there in green is also owned by Microsoft and is zoned neighborhood commercial, not R R five. So here's the actual request uh to amend the master plan for the twenty one acres we can see identified here. Uh the proposed change would amend the master plan destination from employment to commercial. And match the other Microsoft owned properties to the east, which also have the commercial destination. Per the applicant's middle materials, uh the intent for uh and the reason for this this request to amend the master plan. Is to then follow up with zoning that would match the other Microsoft lands. Uh and then move through a mapping process, in this case a merger and re subdivision. Uh to reconfigure uh these commonly owned parcels. For a future project, uh while we we of course recognize master plans. Amendments don't approve projects, uh they are in this case uh the first step in their process towards a project which is stated to be. A substation, an electrical substation. So Lyon County staff was able to advise the applicants on sort of the order of operations here. Uh so we did request that uh Microsoft moved through uh the master plan amendment here. And then the zoning amendment, that's our next item in this agenda, uh before we allow a recording of a final map. For that merger re subdivision, which you see an image here on the screen of. Uh staff has already begun that review. Um and we're seeing here uh the proposed result of uh that future mapping exercise, just to kind of. Add some context to what they're requesting today. Uh so we can see that twenty one acres would be part of two new parcel configurations for the future project and. The reason the county uh you know advise them in this order is that we don't want to create new parcels with split zoning. Uh we're instead going through the master plan and zone change process first. And then when we record the final map, uh they'll have consistent zoning and master plan destinations across um the entire new parcels. Uh I know I'm spending a bunch of time on this, but this presentation is going to look remarkably similar. Uh to the next one, so I thought maybe we just get all the information out here in this first presentation. So the findings for our master plan amendment uh are found in chapter uh two ten oh three of title fifteen, our development code. As is typical in these presentations, we're not going to run through every single finding in in. In in full detail, but we will touch on some of the highlights for how staff does make their findings. In this case, um the the change to uh commercial and the intended. Project that stated of a substation. Uh does seem consistent with what we saw previously for the Silver Springs Technology Park. Uh in that they're aligned with our twenty twenty master plan B L M above ground utility corridors. Uh these corridors are intended to connect. Lyon County uh to walk to a much larger Nevada Energy Green Link. Project uh which is uh moving the the state towards our renewable energy goals. Creating high voltage power lines to connect northern and southern Nevada. And then also connect um these these local jurisdictions into the larger power grid uh that would also be supplemented by. Of course, we know large solar projects on B L M lands uh in in Nevada east of Lyon County. So uh prominently mentioned in the findings is the location of these corridors, uh and it does um. Assist staff in ma- in making the the finding to recommend on approval here. Uh the the highlights are are shown here and that the um. The the change to commercial would support specific master plan goals and policies. Uh specifically those supporting a diverse economic base and and business business and industry locations being appropriately. Uh addressed through the master plan. In this case, again, the above ground utility corridor is is a is an area. That the twenty twenty master plan identified for the types of projects being proposed in this area of the county. Uh no adverse impacts were identified by this change. Uh especially considering again the the commonly owned property that borders the east. Uh and then staff will be presenting the the zone change separately and then we'll we'll execute the mapping process after these processes are completed. That said, staff was able to recommend approval uh for this master plan amendment from employment to commercial. Um available for questions, the applicant does have representation. Uh and a presentation if necessary, although. We're not completely sure if you will need more information, he's happy to provide it if you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission?
Yeah.
Mister Jones.
Who owns the property to the left of that? Is that Microsoft also that?
Um, I'm I'm to the left of the subject twenty one acres.
Yeah, to the west of that.
So I mean, the subject twenty one acres is part of the two hundred and forty nine point five nine acre own parcel owned by Microsoft.
That's what I wanted. Okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Did the applicant want to also? Make a presentation?
Good morning, Commissioners Stacy Huggins with Wood Rogers on behalf of Microsoft. Um I do have a presentation, but quite honestly, it almost mirrors exactly what Lewis presented to you and I don't want to. Waste your time giving you the same information, but I am available if you have specific questions um for me.
You got a hand.
And we do have. Uh then from the commission, we do have a hand up from the public. I was going to ask for public. Questions from the people here first. Not seeing any, can we go to Mr. Lovett?
Good morning, Commissioner Brett Lovett, uh five oh one five on X over springs. I own approximately fourteen different parcels within the notification radius of this property. Including property uh that it joins it and I did never received any notification of these two items on the agenda. Um so maybe we could look into that. I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or? Ask for the public? I guess.
Public participation, are you calling for a question?
Just asking, is there anything further? So, okay, well, thank you. So if there's no further discussion from. Sorry, what? None? Oh, okay. So I didn't entertain a motion on this.
I make a motion based on the aforementioned findings. I move the planning commission for a recommendation, approval of the board of county commissioners. For the request from Microsoft Corporation for a master plan amendment. To change the designation from employment to commercial on approximately twenty one acres. Of a two hundred and forty three point five nine acre partial. A P N zero one five one four one one uh dash thirteen. P L Z two zero two five dash two six.
All seconds up.
Give a little motion and second any further. Uh discussion from the commission.
Set dash three six or two seven.
Says two six.
This is two six thirty, but. Okay.
Says two six.
Okay, I may have the I may have the wrong one. Thank you for answering that.
All right. All right, so you know further. Questions or comments from the commission, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor of the uh. Recommendations to the. Board of County Commissioners, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstained. Hearing none, I'll say that motion passes six zero. Okay, moving on to item seven B for possible actions, afford a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for the request from Microsoft Corporation. For a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning designation from S I services industrial to N C. Neighborhood commercial on approximately twenty one acres of a two hundred and forty three point five nine acre parcel in Silver Springs located north. Of US highway fifty A P and zero one five dash zero one four one dash one three. P O Z guys two zero two five dash oh zero two seven. We have staff for all of that, please.
Yes, sir. Again, Lewis Carrillo is in your planner. Um so this will look exactly like the previous presentation. Uh it's the same subject twenty one acre. Uh that are part of the Microsoft parcel in Silver Springs. Uh as previously mentioned, the suburban character district uh is or the the parcel is within the suburban character district. Uh but we now see on the right. The depiction of the amended master plan, uh as you just recommended approval to the board of commissioners for. Uh the twenty one acres there uh would be presuming approval of the previous item uh designated commercial. However. In actuality, it is still employment until. So here again, we see the slide uh with with my air from the staff report. So let's visit this again. Uh the the zoning for the site is is currently service industrial. Uh and the property to the east in green also owned by Microsoft. Is on neighborhood commercial and we again see service industrials on uh to the north for the Silver Springs Technology Park. So this request uh for a zone change to neighborhood commercial uh is contingent on approval of that master plan. Uh amendment to commercial, uh the twenty twenty master plan provides us with. Uh in chapter three, uh just with a simple table that shows the zoning districts that are compatible. Uh with certain master plan designations, in this case. Uh the neighborhood commercial zoning district is compatible with the commercial master plan designation. Uh so the request here, uh as previously stated in the other item, um is to change these twenty one acres to match the other Microsoft lands. Zoning of neighborhood commercial and then. Go through uh and execute this new boundary merger and reset division uh for a future substation. The findings for, oh, I apologize, there's a mistake there. Um I think that's the right chapter for zoning map amendment to twenty oh five. Of of title. of, of title fifteen, but I forgot to change a heading. Apologies. The heading should say findings for zoning map. And then this slide again, we'll look at first. It's exactly the same slide, so I won't belabor the point about the utility corridors, but they did feature prominently in staff's ability to make the findings to recommend approval of the zone change to neighborhood commercial for the twenty one acres depicted here. I'm again available for questions and Ms. Huggins is here on behalf of the applicants.
I do have a question.
Lewis?
Morning, Lewis. Thank you for the presentation. You said that you're trying to make it so that all the zoning is compatible. So I guess my question really is, did the planning department initiate that or did Microsoft? I know the planning company is looking to bring everything compatible. So was that, did that come from the planning department?
No, that came from Microsoft. They discussed their, their plans for reorienting their commonly owned parcels and then development plans. And then the easiest path forward using zoning would be to simply have these twenty one acres, which they need for the future substation project, match their other zoning of neighborhood commercial. Otherwise, we'd end up with, with two zoning districts that both would have allowed a substation, but it would be a little messy for development standards if we had two district standards.
Yeah. I think it was very good. I think it's proactive. I just, you guys being proactive were.
Ouch.
Anyone else? Thanks. It looks like the applicant's representative might be wanting to step up to the podium.
Stacy Huggins again for the record, just, I just wanted to be available if, if that question needed some more support, but um, do you feel good? Okay. Great. Anybody else?
Don't see anything. So no further questions for you. Um, are there any questions from the people in the audience or online? Comments? Seeing none, I'll just say thanks. So I'll entertain a motion for item seven B.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Based on findings A through C, I know that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the board of county commissioners for the requests from Microsoft Corporation for a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning designation from S I service industrial to N C neighborhood commercial on approximately twenty one acres of a two hundred and forty three point five nine acre parcel in Silver Springs located north of U S highway fifty A P N zero one five dash one four one dash thirteen P L Z two zero two five dash zero two seven.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further commission discussion? Let's go ahead and call for a vote. All favors the, the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or steps, corrections, hearing none? That passes six zero. Okay, we'll move on to item seven C for possible action to forward a recommendation to the board of county commissioners for the requests from Copea Power Devco LLC for a master plan amendment from agriculture to specific plan for the Monarch Data Center consisting of four point six million square feet of data centers over fourteen separate buildings and to include batteries, energy storage systems, a potential natural gas backup system, an electrical substation, high voltage power lines and other access accessory uses over two parcels, totaling approximately five hundred and five acres in Mason Valley east of U S highway ninety five A and accessed by Penrose Lane A P N's zero one four dash two zero one dash zero seven and zero one four dash two zero one dash three zero P L Z two oh two five dash oh two five. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Lewis Carrillo is senior planner presenting. Uh, so those subject parcels are located in Mason Valley. On the left, we see our, our vicinity map showing the relative location of the, the project area from Yarrington. So north of Yarrington on highway ninety five A. And then we see the length of, of Penrose Lane to the two subject parcels extending from ninety five A, it's approximately one point two five miles east of highway ninety five A. For the county assessor's records, the two parcels are on the order of two hundred and forty and two hundred and sixty five acres for approximately five hundred and five acre project area. We see Penrose Lane enters roughly the, the middle of the project area. Walker River is out to the east of the site. So looking at some, some better graphic imagery, we can see the, the site has been used for field crops with some supportive of supporting livestock. And it is traversed by irrigation ditches and irrigation ditches are under the authority and jurisdiction of the Walker River Irrigation District. So we have consulted W R I D on this process and then in a future process, as every part of of reviewing development and amendments and W R I D would maintain their authority over these ditches. Moving into the master plan designations, the entirety of this region in, in Mason Valley is within a rural character district. You might recall from the previous item, this would be the opposite. So in this case, there are no public utilities available, water, sewer. So that is consisting of the rural character districts. And master plan designation here is agriculture, which does seem appropriate for the historic use and continued use in this region of Lyon County. The applicable zoning for the site is rural residential twenty acre minimum. We can see the subject parcels there are highlighted in blue, but they are the they would be depicted in pink as we see here with rural residential twenty acre minimum surrounding not just the subject parcels, but most, most of this area of of Lyon County and Mason Valley. You will note some of the smaller lot sizes and smaller designations along the Penrose Lane. So the request details here are to recommend approval for a specific plan. So the, the specific plan code in, in Lyon County's development code, title fifteen is sometimes a bit difficult to navigate and a little peculiar. It's important to recognize that the, the specific plan is a master plan level document. But when we look through that code section and what is required for applicants to submit for a specific plan, there are levels of detail associated with actual development that are more commonly seen in planned unit developments or tentative subdivision maps, even a conditional use permit. The types of entitlements where we can place conditions upon the, the review. In this case, what we're creating through a specific plan is essentially what's we locally refer to as a, as a mini master plan. And in the future, any future entitlements that would come forward were a specific plan to be approved. Then the findings associated with, with master plan compliance would be relating to this and not the base master plan designation of agriculture. Instead, we've replaced it with a larger development plan that in concept discuss, discusses types of uses access and relation to neighboring development. So that's where we, we see some of the language here in the slide about per title fifteen. Just a small quote that a specific plan allows for more precise implementation of the master plan. And again, what that means is we have a bit more detail about what intended development plans on the site are. That said, I, I did want to include this kind of quicker fresher, we'll just call it. And, and this slide should look familiar from when we did the Silver Springs Technology Park. Because again, it is, is, it is a peculiar section of code in Lyon County. So a specific plan does provide a mix of land uses that are consistent and compatible with the applicable character district. It does assist the county with future planning of infrastructure and services. But it does not actually change the underlying and regulatory zoning. So it is important to, to recall, even though we're looking at a large development plan here, we're not requesting approval of the actual development through this process. That would be forthcoming in future applications. Staff would prepare new reports. There'd be new public noticing. All of that is still, would still be in front of a developer. In this case, the applicant has been advised through consultation with staff over many months that the planned unit development process would be the subsequent step to this process were this, this specific plan to be approved. So I, I think that's kind of stating what's here on this slide. E- even if we got to the point where we were doing staff level administrative design reviews, that would be another opportunity for Lyon County staff to be looking for compliance with code, looking for compliance with the specific plan. And again, reviewing developer proposals. So we'll jump right into the imagery here. You know, when we're looking at a site that's over five hundred acres, it is sometimes a little diff- difficult to to really drill down to, to what's proposed. But if we do recall again, that this is a master plan level document with conceptual development plans and areas. And I think this, this slide makes a bit more sense in that we're looking at essentially two campuses, just a term that they, they're using that are roughly split out between the, the two subject parcels. Each would include data center buildings and then electrical substations. There'd be a switching station in, in that first campus, switching station just being another means of, of modifying voltages throughout the, the project area. In most basic terms, I'm sure there might be some engineers who don't like that simplification. There's also a proposed battery energy storage system contemplated backup energy system to include natural gas. I'm not quite sure if that's certainly going to be part of any future plans. But I did want to point out that we, of course, did see the, the board of county commissioners discuss changing our, some sections title fifteen related to renewable energy. And one of the amendment conditions per bill twenty five oh two adopted by the board of county commissioners on June eighteen, twenty twenty five was that battery energy storage systems may be recognized as accessory to primary uses. In this case, the primary use would be the data center. So I did want to kind of differentiate what's being proposed here as part of a larger project from a standalone battery energy storage system. The details here on the left of, of the slide do show a bit more of the development scope that was proposed, even read into record as part of the description, which is that four point six million square feet of data center buildings. The proposal is for fourteen at this stage, is for fourteen separate structures, each on the order of seven and a half acres in size. The the buildings themselves, Lyon County has already kind of reviewed how to classify the buildings for development standards. And we have found them to be analogous as, as other local jurisdictions have done so to warehouses in the sense that they are just large buildings. Internally, we're looking at just rows of computer servers and a lot of HVAC equipment. They don't necessarily generate a lot of traffic once they're up in operation. But, and I'm using this as sort of a segue into the main topic for staff's review here. During the construction phase, they can have significant impacts. So I can keep moving through the presentation if there's any questions before I move on, I'm, I'm happy to, to try and respond to them, sir.
Yes, I have a question. I was seeing this as the first step of what's likely to be a multi-step process and the way it's presented, I'm not sure. If things like the traffic study and all that, is that something that would be better reserved for a future discussion or can that be part of this master plan?
Uh, great, great question, sir. We did sort of move the applicants to a new process for submission of the application materials for the specific plan amendment. So the, the code in title fifteen does include traffic impact study, but Director Henderson has some authority to also request additional items as deemed necessary. In this case, we did request and the applicant did meet that request that we receive a traffic impact study that also includes traffic counts and impacts during a construction phase. So that is not typical. We did hold a meeting with N dot staff as well as the applicant and county staff. And N dot's position typically has only been that their standards for traffic impact studies are based on the operational phase of a project. In other words, what are the impacts to roadways, including they of course are most concerned with, with end up roadways or that's their jurisdiction? They're not necessarily requesting a format that would include traffic counts for construction phases. County staff recognize that projects of this scale have extended timelines for construction that can go on for years. And in this region, we already have the Walker River Substation Project being constructed on Sierra Way to the north, just a couple of miles to the north. And we also have the Winston Solar Project in this region, all of which will have, may have extended construction timelines that can overlap. So what we are endeavoring to do by requesting a traffic impact study that includes counts for traffic phases is to get our arms around the, the total impacts of these types of projects on these regions of the county. So I, I know that was a bit of a, that was a long answer, but the, the specific plan application requirements do state traffic impact study, sir. What they don't explicitly state is traffic impact studies that include construction impacts. So that's where we kind of made a bit of a departure in what you saw in this report.
I guess what, what I'm asking is, is it appropriate to include the traffic studies and, and other things like that in the master plan decisions that we're looking at or does that need to wait till another, another step?
I, I think again, this is something of a peculiarity of the specific plan code section in that we're making findings that are directly informed by development standards and proposals and scope, even though it's at the master plan level. So we, we have this information. Staff is, is supposed to be making findings per the code for these master plan amendments and some of them address direct impacts to to, to neighboring development. And that's where you, you see sort of the, the findings in the staff report. And, and I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but unable to make a full recommendation recognizing the impacts of traffic over these extended and, and somewhat indeterminate, undetermined timelines for construction. I mean, many, not many, all of these projects are essentially contingent upon the ongoing extension of large power sources associated with that Greenland project. So you know, that timeline is almost a decade out for some of the components to be fully charged by a new power grid. But I, I know that this is a lot. And I'm not trying to evade the question.
No, I don't think so. Mister Ellen, you got a question?
Yeah, Mister Ellen would like.
Mister Ellen.
Commissioner.
Um, thank you. So that's what I'm hearing and what I've read is the challenge that the traffic impact study is during construction and that's, that's where we're going to see the biggest impacts is during construction. When so this kind of leads to a second part of the question. There are some five hundred acres that we're talking about here and some fourteen individual facilities going to be placed on these. They're not going to generate the kind of traffic that we're talking about over the long term, if I'm reading correctly. Nor are the buildings going to stand out in any fashion that would really detract from agriculture. Am I right there?
I mean, it's a pretty broad statement.
Yeah, it is. It is. But there are other phases going to come.
And we do have a, a few more slides here from the applicant's middle materials as well as staff report that show some, some renderings of the actual buildings. I think the, the. Um I think the the distance from the highway uh of over a mile. As well as uh land that that sort of gently slopes away from the highway towards the Walker River to the east. Um and then the expected continued agricultural. Uh frontage along the highway would. In. Concepts um. Largely screen the proposed development. Now, that's not to say that the character is not changing, of course, that is the case. But I'm speaking from the highway. If you drive down Penrose Lane, of course, you're going to see it. I'm not saying you're not going to see it all. Uh but these are not high-rise buildings. I do have, again, I, at this point, we're we're talking about. At the master plan level, we just have conceptual rendering. So were we to be moving forward with future reviews? That's when we would really dig into the details of how tall is this? What colors are they? Where specifically are they? What does the buffer look like? What kind of landscaping is going to be required? What other sorts of uh open space requirements would be part of the develop? So even here at this preliminary stage, I mean, there's a stated vote of twenty percent open space. Um so you know, that that alone would be on the order of a hundred acres of respect.
Thank you.
Yes. If no objection, I'd like to let Senior Planner Curio continue with his presentation.
So. Right on time, uh here are some of those conceptual images provided by the applicant. Uh this would be the view from the end of Penrose Lane, so essentially looking almost due east. Um you know, the. The buildings, I think, are are barely decipherable here, but. I do want to make sure we recognize this is conceptual, uh this is just a rendering, so. The the same could be said here for the other image uh that that we're going to see here in the presentation, although. Uh the staff report and the attachment which include the applicant's middle do include a bit more renderings. Um so here, again, looking relative kind of to east. Um we can see the the individual buildings, the substations, and then the footprints for maybe the. I mean, I'm sorry, for the data centers, and then the footprints for the substations, battery, energy, storage, et cetera. So uh the findings from master plan amendments and specific plans, uh again, found in. Uh title fifteen. Prosections quoted here. There are two sets of findings. Um this seems to be the theme of our planning. Items today. Uh once again, we are looking at the twenty twenty master plans. Above ground utility corridors. Uh and then the generalized project area in that green box in the middle. The. Walker River Substation Project is just to the north. Uh when i- i- if you read through the findings, the only finding that staff made in the affirmative. Uh was a finding related to compact development patterns. And the reason being, uh these these data center projects. Do need uh significant amounts of energy, uh they all will include their own substations. And then they need their their genti lines. Gentile lines just means the high voltage power lines that would connect. These projects to the larger grid. So as one might imagine, th- they have impacts as well. So the fact that the substation. Is just to the north of of this project site. You know, it's here away, and then the we have the location of these above-ground utility corridors extending out east into BLM lands. Uh does provide for. It sounds odd to say when we're talking about a five hundred acre project, but does provide for relative compact development patterns. Uh these corridors were approved as part of the master plan that went through a a. A extent uh an extended public hearing process. And these corridors are intended for service to the types of projects that are being proposed here. There's an image uh from the applicant. Uh where they provided, I think, a cleaner rendering. Of those utility corridors. I did add some some graphics there for the corridor. Uh we can see the project area. So that quarter to the to the east. Uh of the project area running north would directly connect to the Walker River Substation. So highlights from the master plan. I mean, highlights, I'm sorry, from the findings. Uh do include, just as we saw in the in the Microsoft items. Uh you know. These types of amendments provide the the basis for future. Project uh submittals. That would support a diverse economic base and business, business and industry locations being appropriately cited. Again, prominently based upon the location of those above-ground utility corner. The county in the future, of course, would still be running through additional entitlements, including building permits. Um any kind of improvements to existing structures, uh the fire district would, of course, be reviewing that, but. Again, thi- this. This process is not approving the development of pending planning and development. Would be the vehicle for staff to really get into the details of what will be and not allowed. And again, what buffers look like, what height would be, what colors would would be allowed. Uh the Walker River Irrigation District, again, would would maintain their authority over those irrigation ditches. So. Uh the process, the project, any future project will have to work with W R I D directly. Uh to ensure that they still have clear passage or whatever they deem to be appropriate. Uh drainage through these project areas. Uh a future planning development, as previously mentioned, even even the staff level administrative design review would be another bite the apple. Uh for staff to review development proposals. However, uh a- as. We kind of touched upon earlier in this presentation. Staff is not able completely at this time to fully assess. How the construction phase traffic will be mitigated for this project. So we'll we'll jump into a couple slides here that are directly related to traffic. Uh and staff's inability to fully make a recommendation. Uh for this project, as would be typical. Uh so first off, some of the language in the the applicant's middle. Uh simply mentioned that that Penrose Lane would be a rural ru- is rural roadway and that. Um the project itself would not. Provide the the types of traffic numbers that would too significantly impact. Uh the this roadway in this neighborhood. So that's where staff sort of dug in a little bit, and I think some of it, some of the inconsistency between. What's noted in the traffic impact study. Uh what's also noted in the attachment you received, uh which is the N dot. Uh Nevada Department of Transportation's response letter to that traffic impact study. And the language in the findings, the timings didn't quite sync up where the. We did request the traffic impact study for construction phase a little later in the process. The applicant quickly implied. But we received those end up comments after public noticing, but before I was. Done drafting, we were done drafting the staff report. So. You know, th- this is where staff somewhat struggled with. Properly assessing the traffic impacts to Penrose Lane and to a number of other uh intersections here. In the project, and we'll touch on that here in the next couple slides. So this image. Uh is from the Kimley Horn drafted traffic impact study. It identifies the six intersections that were contemplated uh as part of the scope. Uh it is important to note that N dot did approve the scope of this study. Uh I did personally speak with um the engineer who reviewed and sent the comments. Um about the fact that the traffic impact study submitted here at the master plan level for this specific plan amendment. Would also uh be the applicable format for the planned unit development. I think that's important, essentially, they're they're a little ahead of the game here, right? Notably, there, we see the project area, two of the intersections, numbers three and four being the intersection of ninety five A and Penrose Lane. And then four would be the access to the site. Uh we have the intersection of Miller Lane and Highway ninety five A, number five, going north, we see the Sierra Way. Uh intersections at one and two, and then all the way down at the at the bottom of of this image. Intersection six is the intersection ninety five A and State Route three thirty nine here in Yarrenton. And I'm pointing that out because as we move forward to these next two slides. Which are. Uh taken from. The traffic impact study for the construction phase. Well, note that the the. Calculated peak hour trips. And peak hour for the AM hours is seven AM to nine AM. And for the PM hours, it's four PM to six PM. So we're thinking about commuter hours. So the peak hour trips generated by the construction phase. Are close to twelve hundred in both the morning and the evening, one thousand one twenty two in the morning, one thousand two hundred and sixty eight in the evening. As one might imagine, on a one-lane highway. Uh in a region that already has. Potentially farm vehicles, as we all know, um I just got my windshield shipped on the drive down today. But um. There's already. Reasons for potential traffic delays. We have that hill going Anglo Busca heading just north um. Up the hill towards Yarrenton, I mean, towards Silver Springs, apology. And this addition traffic. For the N dot. Response and even the Kimmy Horn recommendations, which I will touch on here and move back. Do require some mitigation and. Oh, well, I'm sorry, I'll just. Let's, can we move forward? That, so we'll we'll go back to that previous slide. The previous slide was the operational phase. So that the some of the recommended improvement right out of the traffic impact study. Uh do request six hundred and fifty foot length de-acceleration lanes. Both north and south, a dedicated turn lane and a de-acceleration lane on Highway ninety five A approaching nine um Penrose Lane. Uh additionally. There are, uh there is language about. That uh that scoped intersection number six down here in Yarrenton, State Route three thirty nine and ninety five A. Dropping to a level of service of F, so that, as we all recall, that's a failure of that intersection. Essentially, delay is too long. For proper flow of traffic. So. There is a recommendation for a attempt, I'm sorry. This is Penrose Lane, I have. There's a number of slides here for for the track impact study. There it is, the comment about um. A recommendation to mitigate the impacts for level of service F at three thirty nine and ninety five A in Yarrenton. So again, with the timing here, the end up comments were received after the public noticing went out, but before the staff report was finished. And that's why ultimately. And again, I'm sleeping ahead, we we're not. Sitting comfortable with the staff recommendation. I would like to go back here um to my previous slide, however. Um so. Going back to the. To the comments and the numbers for the construction phase. These are the calculated operational phases. For the full data center buildup. And. Recall that seven AM to to nine AM being, I think, one thousand one hundred and twenty-two trips is down to five oh six. And in the PM, we're down to from over twelve hundred to 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 four hundred and fourteen. Trips, so. Uh that was how N dot typically would have been reviewing these projects. We did work with the applicant and they did accommodate us in, again, providing these construction numbers, despite the fact that, quite frankly. Um they they do make it challenging for us to review this, so. This is, uh these are where we see the the previously mentioned de-acceleration lanes recommended for Penrose. And I I won't keep talking about this part and just get us to. This part of the no staff recommendation. So a master plan amendment can't be conditioned uh through a P U D, you would have. For instance, a handbook that would have development standards that would explicitly give. Us an opportunity to uh prepare a staff report, to negotiate with the developer, but then bring it to the planning commission, to bring it to the board. To publicly notice and to have that document printed so that people could discuss, okay, your development standards, we like this, we don't like that. In this case, we're not able to do that, but we do have this information. We do know that there is extended construction timelines. We do know that we. Can't exactly figure out how these timelines are going to overlap with other large projects that all will be using ninety five A. So recognizing that the master plan designation is not a full approval, um both staff and the applicant would be dependent. On this process. Uh being fully executed before moving forward with future entitlements. So that's, this is, we have this information, but staff is not completely able to make a recommendation. Based on the fact that the mitigation measure. Uh as requested by N dot have yet to be fully drafted. Or provided to the county, and the applicant hasn't had a a a chance to actually draft that either. So. I know there are questions. I am available for them, and the applicant has a presentation and and. Full cadre of. Of consultants here to answer questions, including uh traffic engineer who drafted.
Mister Ellen.
Okay, so. You know, that really makes it challenging for us when when you submit. A project to us where we can't make a recommendation. You know, and so it leaves us in a position of. Can we make a recommendation or should we make a recommendation? And um. I, one of my burning questions was going to ask, and you said there wasn't time. Whether the applicant provided additional information with regard to the questions that you. Presented back to them so you could have the information for us. And that. Hasn't been or isn't forthcoming, or it's not here. So it leads me to, should, are we in a position then for a motion for a continuance? Until we get additional information?
And so that would have to be with the applicant's consent. So I think probably I might suggest that maybe.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So um master plan amendments are limited to three times a year, so um. In order to keep on that schedule, we would not be able to do a continuance.
So it's either, uh uh yeah, you're a name. We can't, you're you're not, it's not time to comment yet, no. Okay, we're still discussing.
We'll give you time.
Okay, Andrew has something.
Yes. Go back to uh. Were you talking about um the difference between the cup? And the site. Or was it specific plan? Can you explain those to me so that you can see what?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Mister Merritt. Um. So the different entitlements that we're reviewing, I think. We're used to seeing uh conditional use permits. Where we make findings and then we can place conditions on the requested use. Uh then, of course, the planning commission and the board get to review those. Uh or we might see a planned unit development where we have a full handbook. Where uh the document actually outlines the new development standards and have a chance to to determine what those look like. Uh even the uh. Administrative design review that staff does, it's a staff level review, uh but the findings are the same as the conditional use permit. Uh uh tenor subdivision map. Would again, even a parcel map would give staff an opportunity to place conditions on the goods class. In this case, we don't have that latitude, uh master plan. Uh and zone change, zoning amendments, master plan amendments cannot be conditioned. So that's. And I know I've used this word a few times. This is where the the specific plan language in title fifteen is a bit peculiar. Uh for those of us who worked in planning in other jurisdictions, this is not typically how they're written. Because the application materials for a specific plan. Are somewhat analogous to what you would see for tentative maps. Or a a planned development in that they ask for development details. And. That's where we're sort of in in this area where we we want to be able to move forward. With recognizing that a project of this scale requires. A little bit more than just a master plan amendment, right? It's over five hundred acres. Our code requires a specific plan for. Any master plan amendment over one hundred and sixty acres. Because areas with specific plans typically don't have utilities or don't have clear access. And then when we're talking about projects this scale, they will obviously have impacts in neighboring properties. So. We're here at the master plan stage with information, but we're unable to condition any approval. I feel like I restated what you said, but I did want to just contextualize it a little bit.
Mister Jones.
But what I'm hearing is saying is if you approve the master plan. And the zoning. You still have control over the development of the property as far as. Uh setting the the standards of the way that property would be built out.
Yes, sir, the the a a penny planning and development would would essentially become the new zoning. That's where we would really dig into, hey. You need this much open space. How are you going to screen that? How tall is that building going to be? You're limited to. How tall is that building going to be? You're limited to these colors. Um, how are you going to maintain the irrigation digits? That type of thing, yes, sir.
Possible that in the future, that when we're working on these kind of projects, that we have a uh. A finding of what the potential revenue is for the county. On these projects, so we know how it's going to impact. The county.
Sure.
The offers.
Yes, sir, I. I can assure you that the applicant's presentations will include some information about that. I know the uh app, the submitted materials and the attachments did have some of that. Uh, I have to work with Director Henderson and not sure who else, maybe the county manager. If we were going to try and and figure out a way to do that ourselves, I'm honest, sir.
Mister Loomis.
Contrary to some of the comments from other commissioners on here and refer to us, I'm going to refer to me, okay? This, it seems to me that. This could be approved. Understanding that N dot made their decision based on three or four other projects. Because they don't know the exact timelines of when all these things are going to happen, so there could be. Five thousand trucks on the road one day, they could be known on the road another day. Is that what I'm understanding correctly? It's because of the backup of. What the timeline is for these alternate projects, it may affect this one, or is there a specific timeline? That this. Project can be done within, but won't clash with the other projects.
Great question, Commissioner Loomis. I I wish we had some more authority to dictate the construction schedules. And I can't speak for N dot, and I don't know that they're actually. Working with us directly for construction phases. I I can almost say with certainty they're not. Because we did ask. Kimmy Horn and the applicant to prepare a T I S. That would address construction impacts. I mean, that was something we actually just did ourselves. Um, through this process, so I. I'd like to think that we can maintain our relationships with with N dot. And work towards um cumulative impacts. Uh, for these projects, I I but. I don't know that we actually have that information right now. I think thi- this traffic impact study was. Was drafted and calculated out for just this project's impacts. Now, they did do counts for existing traffic. But that, of course, wouldn't be incorporating. Future trips for other large projects.
Mister Allen.
Yeah, I and I uh think maybe to uh add on to um. The the last comment is that, you know, I I think. All of us, not me, you know, because we. We're not thinking of just me when we're. Looking at these projects. Um, is not to lose sight that this is a master plan amendment. And that the kinds of information that um. We would get would. Come maybe in the next phase when the planned unit development. Is being prepared. That we would get into the need of, you know, some of these more specific things. But it, you know, because I really do think this project makes sense. It is in a utility corridor, like you say, and I think. You know, it was planned for these kinds of. Applications. To be put in those areas. And I, you know, just looking at it on the whole, it it doesn't seem like it, the impacts will be. Real significant. You know, and that. You know, if we're going to um look at growth, you know, in our um. Communities. You know, that this is a. Perfect way to do it.
Yeah, my comment would be that um, I think it's all would also be a boon to the county for a number of reasons to have a large project like this. But I'm concerned that. Uh, looking at the response from N dot. They they gave five responses and one of the things that. The applicant says they need to have happen to really make this go and not impact the rest of the county negatively, or the people having of ninety five A. Um, they say they're not in favor of those things. Especially the the signalization, putting in a temporary light and that kind of thing. And for how long? I don't know how long they're even talking about. So that that concerns me. And then at the end of their letter, they they add. Well, they, I guess they have six items, they said, and they reserve the right to incorporate further changes and comments as they think of them. So who knows?
Well, and and. Thank you, Mr. Chair, um for for pointing out some of the the language in the end out response, I. I do think it's probably best for maybe for for the applicant, particularly the the engineer drafted Kimmy Horn, the the traffic study. Uh, to maybe answer some of those questions, but that process would typically involve another. Response by Kimmy Horn to end up and there'd just be a pending respondents.
Were you finished with the presentations?
I'll be available, of course, okay.
Good morning. My name is Ashwoods for the record. I'm here representing Copia Power and our request for a master plan amendment from agriculture to specific plan. To support the development of the proposed monarch data center that Louis just discussed. Um, I'll do my best not to duplicate too much of what he's already discussed, um but I will get into. Some similar project specifics before we get into the traffic discussion. I'm joined today by James Kelly, Copia's Senior Director of Digital Infrastructure. As well as uh two of our third party consultants, uh Danielle Bouchard, a land use planner from ERM. And David Jekoman, a traffic engineer from Kimmy Horn, that will speak to your traffic questions later. A little background on Copia. Um, Copia specializes in developing, owning and operating large scale energy projects. We're primarily focused on renewable energy generation as well as data centers in US markets. We're led by industry veterans, as you can see here, with combined over a hundred fifty years of experience. Working in renewables and uh digital development throughout the US. And we currently have over thirty gigawatts of power generation and ten gigawatts of. Data center development in our pipeline in the US. So for our project overview, uh we've gotten into this a bit, and as Lewis said, the focus. Of this presentation really is not um the the data center. Site design itself, uh that would come later in the beauty process. And uh we would work closely with you all to uh. Develop a site design that works for everyone, um and that everyone finds mutually agreeable. But just to give you kind of a ten thousand foot view of what it could look like. Uh, here we've got a very preliminary uh site design layout here, um so with white boxes are. Data center buildings, uh we have two yellow substation. Locations, uh one switching station. Battery storage and uh backup thermal generation. The the project itself. Uh, would need uh an approval from, as Lewis said, the master plan designation of agriculture. To a specific plan to support this development. Um. The project site is about five hundred acres split between these two parcels here at one fifty and one fifty five Penrose Lane. Currently, those two parcels are used for agriculture. There are no uh existing residential buildings. On those properties, um they're just used for agriculture. Um, the data center would be phased into two campuses, as you can see here, kind of split between the north and the south parcels. Roughly kind of half of the data center buildings in each campus, a substation in each campus. Um, and that would also follow construction phasing, just so part of the project could be brought online. And then another part of the project could be brought online as we're going through construction. Uh, we've also co like co-located backup. Thermal and better battery energy storage on this uh proposed campus. To uh make sure that we have consistent energy delivery to the data center. But also to make sure that we are participating in grid stability for. Um, N B E's local grid here, so the the actual thermal generation would feed into N B energies grid. And so that would be supplying energy to the grid that we would need to use. Um, so that's ensuring that we have good stability, we're not um pulling too much load. From the grid itself and that that power is available to the region and then the battery energy storage. Stores energy so that if there's ever any disruption. During peak hours or something like that, then we would actually have that energy available to continue supplying power to the data center. Um, construction for this project, and we've discussed that a bit, um so construction is really dependent. On completion of the Green Lake Transmission Line. Uh, that's slated to come online around twenty twenty eight, uh the first phase of development of this project. Um, would hopefully come online at close to that time. It really depends on a lot of other factors. In terms of permitting and our, you know, agreements with N B Energy, et cetera. Um, but the initial phase of development would be about a hundred and fifty megawatts of the the proposed one thousand. So subset of those buildings so that they could come on one early. Um, which is about two to four data center buildings, and then the remaining facilities would follow uh on completion of that first phase. And uh in total, we're expecting construction to take about two to three years. Uh, it really just depends on kind of how we can face things and work with N B Energy. So, yeah, I can go to project. So to get into some of our uh economic benefits to the county. We had ERM conduct a an economic impact analysis, so these are all preliminary numbers just based on. Uh, what we've seen for other data centers in the region as well as um just. Kind of tax structure for the county itself. Um. So the analysis found that the the project would have pretty significant contributions to. The county in terms of tax revenue um as well as job creation. Um, Copia anticipates that the total capital investment for the project would be around eleven billion dollars. Uh, during operations, we would expect to contribute around five hundred and sixty two thousand dollars every year. In property taxes and of that money, ninety five percent of it would stay in the county. Um, so only five percent of that would be going to the state. And the county would see that in supporting uh local school districts, fire districts. Um, and other tax districts that provide community benefits. And consistent with the master plan goal, O U three, the project would create employment opportunities for the county. Both directly uh in the way of jobs that uh are involved in the operation of the facility itself. Would be permanent full-time jobs as well as indirectly by stimulating local businesses in the area um from the folks that those jobs bring in. This is just a quick overview of the development standards. Uh, these two parcels are designated as a rural resource twenty zoning. And these are the development standards for that zoning. Um, we just want to highlight that. If we're given the opportunity to go through the P U D process, that's a much more involved process, and we would work very closely. With you all to make sure that we're meeting the development standards in a way that's acceptable to you, um. There's quite a few different provisions in here. Uh, for things like a minimum of twenty percent open space, interior buffering around the irrigation districts. And internal access roads to retain flood control, provide emergency access. Perimeter site buffering and landscaping for visual impacts, um transmission line buffering. The actual building inside details uh are very preliminary right now. We're really just in this phase of trying to get this master plan designation changed so that we can proceed to the next phase. Um, so all of those site details would be addressed in the P U D. So you've seen these already from Louis's presentation. These are. The visual renderings that we had done for um the project location, just to kind of give everyone an idea of what this really could look like. As you can see, it's almost difficult to even find the data center in these left two uh visual renderings. The buildings are relatively low profile. Um, this is from the bottom photos from the end of the property line, so this would be. Kind of as close as someone could reasonably get without actually. Getting into the property itself where um we're planning to have the data center. So that would be the closest someone would reasonably be to the project. And as you can see, it's really not too obstructive, um. And we would also have, like I said, some buffering and landscaping to beautify the area. Uh, to help with those visual impacts for folks down on Penrose Lane. Um, this top photo is about thirteen hundred feet. From the data center and the nearest residence for reference on Penrose Lane is sixteen hundred feet. From the property line, so really, um if you're, you would be three hundred feet further away than we're looking at on that top photo. Uh, so we're um, we're not thinking that the visual impact will be significant and the rest of this area. As you can see here on the right is surrounding, um is surrounded by agriculture. So there really isn't an opportunity for the visitors or the community residents to come up and uh. See this project. It would be very unlikely unless you're have business in this immediate area that you would ever even encounter or know that this project is here. So digging into. And why we're here today, which is to request uh the specific plan. Uh, as you can see on the right, this is a map of all of the existing and proposed developments. In the area, so as well as the designated energy corridors, which are those kind of light blue. Borders there, um the red is the. The Monarch Data Center project, um the purple is E D F's um solar projects. And then you've got geothermal to the north as well as. The uh Fort Churchill and Walker River substations, um. Which are about three miles north of our project. So we we really strategically cited this uh this project to be within. Um, as much as the of the energy corridor overlapping as we could get. Including our proposed gentile line would also be through the energy corridor. Uh, and really just trying to co-locate it with other developments. So we think that this project site, given the rest of the activity in the area. Um, and how it's trending really consolidates that development into kind of one section. Um, and allows all of this to occur in an efficient way with, you know, relatively short gentiles and. You know, lower impact to the broader community, um as this is pretty well off into. To a an undeveloped area and um. Has a lot of existing. Development proposed already. Um. Also want to point out, the project is located within the rural character district, which. We're not proposing to change, would not need to change, um the use of the project would be consistent. With the light industrial uses that are already allowed in the rural character district, um. Inconsistent with. Master plan goal C two and O U one, um those that industrial uses that are already permitted. Um, would not require uh a change in that rural character district designation. Um, so mending the to a specific plan from agriculture for this area for the data center development, let's still be consistent. With the existing rural character. Um, and we'd also like to point out that the Fort Churchill substation. Uh, and the the Green Lake line are also within the rural character district, um so these uses in this area. Um, within that district are consistent with what we're proposing. Um, the Walker River Substation Complex, which is currently under construction. Is slated to connect the Green Lake Line, which the the intention of the Green Lake. Is to serve as a driver to next energy development in the region. Um, and it's being constructed to accommodate increased load and capacity needs. Um, and it's it's. The turn this is at Fort Churchill, and so we're kind of locating as close as we could get to that area to really try to consolidate development. Um, but the the Green Lake Line and that Walker River Substation expansion um are intended to bring development to this. Specific area, um. And these energy uh previously approved energy borders also serve that purpose. Um, consistent with. The master plan goal and R one. Uh, the Wa- uh Walker River Wildlife Management Area, which um extends from kind of this. Uh, southeast and part of the northern um boundaries of the project. Southeast and part of the northern boundaries of the project. Would not be obstructed for public access, so the project really is. Surrounded on the west and the north mostly by agriculture and private property and then folks would still be able to access. Those publicly available wildlife management area lands from from the east. Additionally, the project would not affect the surrounding land uses. So anyone who's currently farming that land could still continue to form that land and it would not affect their ability to do so. The project would be contained directly to the footprint and we would work with the irrigation district to make sure that water is conveyed. Where it needs to go, if any modifications were needed to those stitches for folks in the surrounding properties. We really think that we've cited the project in a manner that is consistent with the master plan goals. And think that the change from agriculture to specific plan consolidates impacts. And development to this area that's already slated for energy infrastructure. And provides the county an opportunity to really capitalize. On that and capitalize on all of the activity that's going on here. And in a way that could benefit local residents and really just consolidate things to to an already impacted area. For the next remaining slides, I'll bring up David Jockman, our. Traffic engineer and he can speak to the traffic pieces that I know you're all very eager to discuss. And we will do our best to to answer your questions.
Thank you. Again, David Jockman, Kimmy Horn, Traffic Engineer. On the next slide, you already heard a little bit about this, so these are the intersections that we analyzed. So far as a part of the traffic study, I won't go into that into too much detail since you already heard about it. On the next slide, I'm going to talk about the benefits that the community will get from this project. You can see the numbers for the intersections on the right over there. At Penrose, we will be putting in turn lanes, so. One of the things that you probably all have experienced yourself along ninety five, when you're heading north or south. One of the greatest safety risks that I would say is on there is that when someone's making a turn. You could have a rear end crash if you're not paying attention. So at Penrose, for the community, not just for this project. You'll be seeing new left turn lanes and right turn lanes. To help mitigate the traffic that will be associated with the project. But those will also be of benefit for everybody else in the community. You also heard from Mr. Carriola that the temporary signals are something that we're currently going back and forth with for NDOT. We prepared this traffic study about one month ago and we don't have an acceptance letter yet, but we do have the. Comments from NDOT and we're working through what those final mitigations will be. Obviously, we don't typically look at those construction volumes when we do a project. But we have done that at the request to go above and beyond to make sure the traffic on ninety five will operate safely and efficiently. When construction is in place, because there will be volumes there that will not always be there. I want to talk a little bit more about, so we so we were proposing a temporary signal at number three at Penrose there as well. And then we're proposing a temporary signal at. There with the intersection of three thirty nine, basically where the Golden Gate is. So that's more in town, obviously, a lot of folks are making that movement. One thing that you don't have in front of you with the staff report, but will be, again, this is. Required by NDOT, so it's 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 a difficult finding for you to make on the planning commission. Because NDOT's the one that has authority over the road, right? So this is very challenging. In addition to having a temporary signal there, we're also taking a look at adding a left turn lane, a southbound left turn lane. At that intersection, so if you are going to the Golden Gate or if you're coming here from Silver Springs today. You do not have a left turn lane, so this is a problem today, it has nothing to do with. The data center project that you're looking at here, but it's a benefit that the community could receive. With an approval, should this move forward? If this does not move forward, you will not see these turn lanes. You will not see, obviously, the temporary signals or things that I would say are more associated with our project, but those turn lanes are permanent. So if you get those turn lanes, you're improving safety with regard to those locations. From their existing conditions today, that is a benefit to the community. And those those turn lanes will serve not just the trucks that go into and out of this project site, but they will serve folks. Like you, like myself, who maybe make that left turn every day or occasionally. Where they could be rear-ended at that intersection, so those are the benefits to the community, I wanted to focus on those because. Those are things that everyone in this room, everyone in this community will receive as a result of this project. If it is approved, so. I'll leave it at that and I will answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Jones. Yeah, I got a question on, I noticed on here that we've mentioned that Sierra and Miller. Will be considered access points?
Yeah, so that's probably a better question for phasing for the project. Up at Sierra, but with this current approval. That that's not the case, Ash, I don't know if you want to add to that at all?
Yeah, it's still under consideration, really it kind of depends, as you said, on the the construction phasing. But that's, those are options that we're looking at and then we would try to just figure out what could, what we could do here to really route traffic and maybe disperse. Traffic load so that those could be potential routes as well as if we're constructing in the north. And then if we're constructing in the south at the same time or maybe to down Penrose, you can disperse some of that traffic to reduce the load on any specific street. But those are all just kind of part of the things that we would work through in the PUD process. While we consider site design and perfect timing.
Yes, Commissioner Loomis.
How long do you say Copia had been in existence?
We've been a company since twenty twenty one, but had previously also had. Kind of the the same folks have been working together and then created this company.
So you said, right now you have about thirty gigawatts in the pipeline?
Yeah.
Are there any completed anywhere? Like, is there another project somewhere we can go look at? To see what were the pros and cons to that existing facility that we can compare to what from my experience moving forward?
Yeah, yeah, we we have a pretty significant construction that's come online in Arizona recently.
Yeah, so we have projects in Arizona right now that are kind of our flagship projects that we've. Constructed over the the last couple of years that are about a gigawatt in size. And those projects, we've worked really closely with the local jurisdictions to make sure that we're creating community benefits as well as. Creating energy for the region.
So not fully operational yet?
Yes, we do have, yeah, we do have some in operation, it's kind of part of a complex, so some of it is online and then some of it is still in construction.
Have a question for me. You mentioned that you said you sounded like you were going to build the turn lanes or NDOT's going to build them at your request or?
So we we, the the applicant would pay for the construction and completion of all those turn lanes. That acceptance letter and, you know, perhaps defer to staff on regarding the power they have. Over things as they move forward, but the acceptance letter from NDOT. Would involve these conditions of of approval, so the project could not get to a C of a certificate of occupancy without the. Mitigations completed, constructed and paid for by the applicant. In addition to obviously all the other benefits they were talking about previously that are not related to traffic. Without without finalizing and accepting that on NDOT's behalf, so the applicant. Instructs those pace for that construction, there is no, and that does not pay for that, it's not up in the air, the applicant has to do that and then. And then and then that's required for final approval.
And the signal, do you have an estimate of how long that temporary signal at Penrose would need to be in place?
It would be in place during construction, so this would this would require some coordination between county staff and the NDOT. In order to determine what times those would occur, I would recommend that that occurs. At all times during construction, so the temporary signal is up and operational when construction is underway. It would make the most sense, but this would be up to staff as to when you remove that signal for permanent operations. Which would obviously be a coincidence with those turn lanes being completed.
Same, one concern I have about that is item number four, the response letter that they sent already from NDOT says. And that typically does not support the signalization of an intersection based merely on the MUTCD warrant three peak hour, so. And we've had some experience with that, I mean, on Highway Fifty Corridor, we had a developer. Actually offered to put it, pay for a signal at a, what will be a busy intersection when it's built out. And NDOT's response was, well, you can build it, but there's no guarantee we'll turn it on, so. This is what you're facing, I think.
Yeah, this is the story of my life, so. And that often has differing interests than what the local community does. They own the road, right? So there's there's an inherent disagreement that can exist in those in those situations, not one thing. Particularly true here in Lion, in Lion County that you will also see in other rural counties across the state is that. Your standards for what you consider to be acceptable for traffic. Are higher than what you would expect to see in Reno or Vegas, you guys don't want to see as much traffic.
Right, no less.
And.
Okay.
You don't want to see as much traffic and so NDOT has their standards, they don't particularly care about one county or city more so than the other. And they want to see that the MUTCD requirements for a signal are met before they put one in. We are, we are, we are meeting that and so we would not. Deviate from putting that, my personal recommendation is that we would not stray from putting that temporary signal in. And we'll work on getting NDOT to the finish line on that. Because I certainly think it's to the benefit of this community to have that temporary signal in place during construction. If you live on Penrose and like, I I also want to note that. The Del Portos are some of my in-laws and Danny who passed away last year. And Cheryl who lives just south of there, like they will be impacted by this project, so. They, it it is to the benefit of this community to have that temporary signal in place. If you're turning off a Penrose, it will be very difficult to make that turn, like the left turns particularly. If you do not put it in place, so we will work with staff and end up to make sure that gets in there.
And the last thing I'll say about NDOT or working with them is they're not known for moving quickly on things and I'm being nice by saying it that way. So did you have a comment?
Have a comment, normally we would not even be discussing this for a master plan amendment project. It's only because of the the complexity of. You not having the specifics that would be outlined in a planned unit development, which has to also be worked on after this is approved.
Yes, so.
So we're just wanting the zone change, master plan amendment at this point.
Yeah, so Commissioner Allen, you make a great point that is is rather difficult when you are tasked with making certain findings. And then you don't have the materials in front of you to make those findings at this step in the process, but you can tell that at some point in the future. It looks like things will go into place, so you have to rely on your your staff to. To use their discretion to get you to that finish line in the future. And because of the process that Mr. Carriola mentioned earlier, you don't have the ability to render additional conditions on this application. As you do with a CUP, Commissioner Merritt, you mentioned that, so. That's that's the leap of faith that you have to take when when exercising this discretion. Here, obviously, you're going to be talking about the financial benefits to the county with approval for this project. I I wanted to take the time to highlight the specific part, safety improvements that you will receive as a part of this project as well with regard to traffic safety. And that's what's on the slide.
I appreciate that and I just, I guess the question I would have of this board and I'm a member just like you. Is do we have that faith to make this leap?
I have a, I have a question on the other letter.
Andrew, you made a comment earlier that master plan amendments can only come up three times a year. So if this one did not go through today, when would it come back?
So Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager, so actually I was coming up to say I misspoke earlier, there is a section in check room two twenty. On master plan amendments and there is a provision and therefore continuances, but you you would still need to get the applicant's concurrence on that. And you would have to have a good cause on that as well.
So if there weren't, they would bring it back again the next time, which would be when?
If there was a continuance, I mean?
Yeah, well, yeah.
So.
I'm trying to identify what the delay would be for the other party in the project.
Yeah, I would also point out as well, like the the intent of the PUD is to. Get into this process in more detail, so today we're not asking for approval of this project at all, this wouldn't approve anything. Except just changing from master plan to specific plan and then that would actually allow us to then get into the details of this.
Which is what Lewis Ted told us at the beginning.
Yeah, that's like really the step we need to be able to answer your questions and get in is the PUD process, so this is just. Has really nothing to do with the project itself, it's just changing from master plan to specific plan, which allows us to then work with you. And give you the information you need.
Had to get some clarification there, so. If it is, so this board is just making recommendations, so denial here does not mean that the project is denied. It still goes to the Board of County Commissioners, if this board were to continue it to your next meeting, say. And that's under thirty five days, then notice would not have to go out a second time on that. But again, I do want to point out that applicant have to reen. You know, there would have to be good cause on.
That was, that was going to be my question, we would have to have good cause to have a continuance. You know, and it sounds like we've been given all the information that we can get at this point. It's just, it's just.
Mr. Jones, you had a question?
Yeah, like the young lady, please. You mentioned sales tax revenue in your presentation, where's that sales tax coming from?
That would be property taxes from the the use of the these parcels as well as. We're working with NVE and the Northern Nevada Development Authority to understand. Some potential tax revenue that could come into the county from that as well.
So these would be property taxes, not sales taxes?
Yeah, so sales tax would come from the capital investment in purchasing things like construction equipment or, you know, other things related to the actual construction of the project. So that would be a lot of sales tax revenue for things purchased within the county and then there's also another piece of that would be property tax. So the tax is coming from a few different streams.
Does the county receive taxes for equipment that sits there, rental equipment?
That's something I would have to look into, yeah, I don't I don't know the county tax structure well enough to answer that right now, but definitely something we could look into if you'd like a better breakdown.
Am I in the question, how many employees will this actually employ once it's open, it's not a ton of employees, I think?
Yeah, so the data center with the battery storage and operation of the backup thermal together. We're estimating anywhere between like a hundred fifty to two hundred twenty permanent employees that would would. Be brought into to operate a facility.
Okay, so I would think for sales tax, you would be selling your service once these data centers are built to other clients and. Would that be a source of the sales tax revenue?
Yeah, yeah, it could be, that's not something that I'm really prepared to speak to in detail, but definitely we could have our consultants put. Put together some more detailed kind of tax structure. For where those streams would be coming from.
Okay, going along with Commissioner Allen's comment about the master plan. The way it all works out, it seems, I have an agricultural analogy I like to use where you have to prepare the ground before you plant the seeds. And so we're in the process of preparing the ground, at this point it sounds like to me.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, we really just need to cross this threshold so that we can get into the. The needy gritty of site design, construction phasing and which will really flow into being able to understand the traffic. Impacts better, so that really all needs to, this needs to happen first before we can really get into that. So I think today, even if we did a continuance, we wouldn't necessarily have. So I think today, even if we did a continuance, we wouldn't necessarily have more information for you at a later date. Um and this, this doesn't approve the project at all. It just approves us being able to move to the next step to then. Prepare that information and provide it to you.
Any, any further questions from the commission? We'll open up to public participation.
Looks like we're gonna be talking a while.
Okay, I was gonna do that at the end of this. Let's take a fifteen minute recess because there's a lot of people that might need to have recess. I should have said how many back. For this, we were gonna open up this item for public questions and comments, and we'll. Start with the room here, and also if somebody raises their hand on the Zoom, we will uh call on them as well. So. Anybody wanting to make a public comment, please step to the lectern and put your name and on the form and. Generally, you have, well, exactly, you have three minutes.
After the name.
My name's Michelle Trino. Uh we have a home at one twenty-five Penrose. Which that's right up to the property they are wanting to do the master plan at. We will see the whole property. Well, our home is up on a hill. Um, I'm against it. I ask that you look at all of us who live out there. Um an extra two hundred cars with a hundred and fifty, two hundred full-time employees is too much. Um, I, I'm not quite sure why one-way road in and out, if there's an emergency is gonna work. Um, the batteries concern me and high-power voltage power lines. They cause cancer. Um I personally wouldn't have bought our house if I knew this plan was going on. Um, I'm not quite sure why they can't go to an industrial area where there is not residence. Um, our wells, we're all on wells. We think about where their water is gonna come from, where is their sewage gonna go? Noise pollution, light pollution, and possibly chemicals. It's close to the Walker River. And I would like to know when this was first presented to the county. Um. I, I don't know if you guys have that answer, but with them doing all these studies, it had to have been in the works for a while. And as a property owner, I, I do need to know that. Um. So I just, I am against it, and I ask that you look at the little guy. Um, the one way, the traffic was, that was their main thing, but the environment. The water, sewage, wildlife, rivers, wells, is all concerned to the residents. Um, so that's what I have to say, and I thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Yeah. If, if someone could give me the date when this was first presented, I'm, I'll see him later.
Yes, please.
Do you have the um control of the?
Yeah.
Pictures? Could I have the rendition of the proposal? I mean, that photographic rendition. At the end of Penrose Lane?
Simon, state your name, please, for the record. You have three minutes as well, when you start.
No, the actual photo. There, hold that one. Okay, whoever took this picture is probably standing next to my mailbox. And uh, my house is about a mile all the way around that parcel. And in the view, in the saddle of Mason Buick. So I will not visually see this. But uh. Before we get too far in the woods here, this data is in it. It's a high-security facility, you know, Fort Knox. They gotta protect that data. It's not gonna look like that. I get it, it's preliminary, but what's not preliminary. Is these data centers all follow the same. Your question was spot on. Let's see one. In operation. It's like a high-security facility. Are they gonna light this thing up like Vegas? What? That comes later. I get it, but I just don't want to say that. High security.
Thank you.
My name's Carolyn Elmer, and I live at forty Penrose Lane, and I've been out there for five years. I love it. Uh, what you people need to do is go out there at five o'clock in the morning. And see the tractors and farm equipment going down that narrow road. They take up the whole road. What's big trucks doing on there? You know, there's one or two cattle trucks that come in, one or two hay trucks. Then you get out on ninety-five, all the farm equipment moving down ninety-five. From clear at the other end of the valley, down to Mazini's. Have you seen that? There's five or six tractors in a row. They don't move over for anybody. Traffic's backed up for a mile. Uh, that's just one issue. The other issue is. What's it gonna do to our property value? Right now, I don't see it looking very good. And I'm totally against it. And that's. But I'd have to say I'm worried about the water. And, uh, what they're, how are they gonna do it? The river, where are they putting into the river? So those are, you know, things that need to be checked into more. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Inga Lawson. I live at eighty-three Penrose Lane. Um, we bought there thirteen and a half years ago. And this is the second time someone has wanted to put something big and ugly up on our street. If we wanted to live with big and ugly and tons of traffic, we live in Reno. Okay? We, we bought rural, we brought out so we can sit on our front porch and play what piece of farm equipment's coming down the road. Not what company is that semi with? You see families walking up and down that street. You see kids riding their bikes up and down that street. We have pets. We have, I have grandchildren. You know, we like the rural. As for the turn lanes, hey, I've almost been keistered a few times. I'm not sure all of us has there. But that doesn't make it okay to build a plant out there. I mean, it's just, and, and as far as the money, this is Nevada. There are tons of other places that they can pick with no neighborhoods, even in Lyon County. So Lyon County will get the share of it. Going up towards Pine Grove, there's a bunch of land out there for sale. And no housing, no people. Why don't they look into Pine Grove? Going out of Silver Springs, up that hill, as soon as you go down the other side, there's a bunch of land for sale out there, no houses. You know, Nevada has many, many, many other options than our little paradise. Because to me, living where I'm at is paradise. And this will ruin it. Our housing, our cost of our houses will plummet. Nobody wants to buy living in front of a freeway. So, yeah. I think I speak for everybody when I say, no. Take it.
Thank you.
Um, my name's Donna Ward. And I live, um, at one Pharaoh Lane. So I'm on the other side of, I'm on the west side. Of Highway ninety-five. And. I'm not against. This proposal. Cause I don't live on Penrose. So. Sorry, guys, I under, I, I totally understand where they're coming from. Except. I will. Boycott this proposal. A hundred percent. I will stomp my feet. I will yell and scream. If they don't make an amendment as this goes on. To put a left turn lane onto Pharaoh Lane coming north. We've already had so many accidents right there. We have. Farm vehicles, big trucks, tractors. Um, you name it, all kinds of equipment. Turning left. North onto Pharaoh Lane. They're gonna do a left turn south onto Penrose Lane. They can just as easily make another left turn. Onto Pharaoh Lane. My grandchildren and my great-grandchildren live on Pharaoh Lane. They have almost been rear-ended by these big. Pieces of farm equipment. More than once and every since the USA Parkway has opened. The, the truck traffic is amazing out there. So I'm just letting you know that you will hear from me again as this goes on. That I will oppose this whole entire project. If they don't change it to say that there's going to be a left turn lane going into Pharaoh Lane. From north into Pharaoh Lane. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, guys. Uh, my name's Kristen, live in one-three Penrose Lane. Um, so going from listening to, uh, the presentation. Trying to keep an open mind, right? What's gonna benefit the people are living in Penrose area as well as the county itself. From what I was listening to and I may have misinterpreted. What I see the benefits for the county is five hundred thousand dollars a year for property taxes and a left turn signal. For three to five years of construction in the area that we're gonna be slowing traffic, that's gonna be reflecting for Penrose and the other areas in there. Now for me, I don't think that's, you know, a great trade-off, especially for, you know, us living in the Penrose area. We're gonna be having to live with the issue of the traffic issue, right? As well as construction. Again, a lot of these people have, have families, uh, little kids. I have little brothers in the area. They do like walking down the areas. That's a whole different lifestyle that those people are not be participating in. Uh, for three to five years for that construction. Uh, and that's kind of my main concern, you know, I'm also not opposed to it per se. Um, it's beneficial to the county, right? Bring a lot of jobs. Now, my question to the applicant also is how much jobs are gonna be local? Are we gonna be hiring a lot of people here in New Rington? Or is it gonna be outbound like Reno or, you know, areas like that? That's another concern that I would think for, for you guys to think about when, you know, approving this or not. When you move to points. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the chambers?
Good afternoon. Commissioners, my name is Mike Trino, reside at one-twenty-five Penrose, uh. We won't have the exact traffic directly in front of our house because we live off the easement that's above. Our house sits exactly four hundred and eighty feet above the, the center itself. It's gonna be our backyard, pretty much. It bats right directly to the irrigation plant that's right there. I know that the big thing has been talking about the traffic, but nobody else has even talked about. The battery storage system here, the backup in energy system. I'm retired for, uh, fire service battalion chief, thirty-four years. I've been to Paradise. Uh, there was one of these, uh, plants in Paradise. When I got there, day two, there were seven thousand homes on fire. This plant was in the same type of system of a, uh, mixed urban interfaced area. That was on fire. Walmart's burned there. We completely evacuated that area for seven miles. The oil wheat, the, I mean, not worried, I'm sorry, the Oramat plant that sits above Pleasant Valley. The evacuation area for that is twenty-two miles from Pleasant Valley. We would have to evacuate everybody that has this type of storage. With these wire-powered batteries and these storage facilities that are there. Uh, for twenty-two miles. That would go from Pleasant Valley to Spaghetti Bowl. Everybody there that would have to be evacuated. I've been on two fires at Tesla. We just actually had to surround the area and just keep everybody out of the area and, and call for Purple K. A foam system from the airport to come out to put this thing out, which we just surrounded it for a period of time and it still didn't go off. So this is what some of the things that I understand the traffic, but the fire system here. Relies on several mutual aid agreements from Central Lyon County, Smith Valley, which is another agency that doesn't, isn't big. The, the falls under the Quad County system with that. If you have a fire out here, the evacuation and the contamination that's gonna go into the ground effects here is gonna destroy this valley. So I think that there's other things that need to be considered, the fact that. There was other things about the security system. I was on a fire at Switch. If switch, if anybody's familiar with Switch, it's in Story County. High-security system, Giga Plant, same thing. They wouldn't even let us in there. It's guard-protected and we had to actually evacuate that area. So I think that these other things about just this, the fact that we've got security issues and the traffic and everything. You gotta consider what type of resources and manpower you have in this fire district to actually maintain and do something there. She presented that there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars going to police, fire and hospital. It's a hundred thousand dollars a year basis for a firefighter. For all of his peers and everything else. That's not even one person that that's actually gonna be allocated money for. So these are some of the things about the resources that are gonna be affected directly in this district. And then if there is a fire there, what's gonna be the contamination? You got the water plant, you got, I mean, you got the water sources. Groundwater, for everybody who is here on wells, septic system, everything else, what effects those are gonna have on our wells? If there is a contamination or just the fact of usage of that water. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the chamber or online?
I just thought I should be here in case. There were questions first.
I didn't know what you were volunteering for.
That's funny.
Okay. Um, any more commission discussion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to thank everyone here for your inputs and reiterate. Uh, Ashwoods for the record, by the way, uh, that this today, we're not asking for you to approve anything about the project itself. Um, really what we're asking you to approve is the opportunity to assess the project later. Um, so through the approval today, all it does is change this land use designation from agriculture to specific plan. It wouldn't allow the project to be built. Um, what it would allow is for us to come back to you later through the PUD process. Hearing everyone's concerns in the room of further public meetings, getting public input. And incorporating that into our site design as well as working with you to understand things like traffic concerns. Additional turn lanes that we need to put in, um, demonstrating that we are, uh. Are good stewards of the land and what our, our plan is for like water resource use, things like that. All of that's included in the PUD application. Um, so we, we can't provide those. Uh, those answers until we can prepare a PUD. Um, so today. We're not approving the project. Um, so I just wanna reiterate that all we're asking for is just the opportunity to work with you through the PUD process. Uh, to then provide those answers and at that point you can make a decision on whether you like the project or not. Um, so that's, that's all we're asking for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I'm ready to entertain a, a motion. I do. Hmm.
Motion.
Yeah.
Based on the information findings, I moved at the planning commission forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for their quest for Copa. Power Devco LLC for a master plan amendment. From agricultural to specific plan for the modern monarch data center consisting of four point six million square feet of data. Centers over fourteen separate buildings and to include battery energy storage systems. A potential natural, natural gas backup system and electrical substation, high-voltage power lines. And other accessory uses over two parcels totaling approximately five hundred and five acres. APN zero one four dash two zero one dash zero seven and zero one four dash two zero one dash three zero. PLZ dash twenty twenty-five dash zero two five.
One second, but excuse, excuse me, Mr. Chair. Uh, that may have been, I'm not sure where you read that from, but it didn't include the. The language of approval. It just said.
Okay.
Recommendation. So I just want that clarified.
To approval?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. With alternatives to approval, does that sound?
No, 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 to approve. I, I think the language there just didn't include the language, rec, forward a recommendation of approval.
Oh, they left it out.
It just said, yeah, that was, that's a typo.
Oh, uh, yeah, of approval. Got it.
Thank you.
And second, Commissioner Maron. With the change in the, the verbiage.
In the verbiage.
Okay, for the commissioner discussion before we vote. Okay. Then, oh, I said, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstaining. Okay, this motion passes six to zero.
Get another shot at taking this down, won't we?
Yes, that, that you're listening to? Yes. It has to, it has to come back to us for everything else.
Okay.
But if this had no notice, would happen.
We can't really, we can't really, we can't interact with those. You can forward those questions to. Mr. Harrison. I just, what am I talking about? Okay. Where's my last? You look, you have people a couple of minutes to.
No, just being, you have a point. I can eat, we might have been in the way that it's written. It makes it sound like.
Oh, no, we're gonna take them.
We're gonna move on to item number eight on the agenda. Okay, I guess we're ready to finally. We have a presentation from CRFMP. And this is for possible action to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the adoption of the twenty-twenty-five Carson River Flood Plane Maintenance Plan.
Hi there, I'm Debbie Nedden Rep and I, uh, work at Carson Water Sub Conservancy District and, uh, I am a child of Lyon County. Um, lived in Burnley till I was ten. My dad graduated from, uh. Lion, my uncle Art Wilson, um, also graduated in the forties. So happy to be here today. So today I'm gonna talk about the Carson River Flood Plane Management Plan. Um, I'll discuss the background, the goals, the objectives and the strategies of the plan. So all the pictures in this plan, uh, show different types of flooding that have occurred in our watershed in recent history. This one, of course, is the nineteen ninety-seven flood, which of course affected Lyon County as well. And so we're in the process right now bringing this fourth update to, um, each of the county planning and. Um, Board of Commissioners to request adoption. Next slide, or here, I guess I have the controller. Um, so the purpose of this plan is to reduce flood risk in the watershed. Um. So it's. Um, so basically the history regarding, um, I'll just describe the history a little bit. So go ahead to the next slide. So the Carson River Coalition originally made this plan in two thousand eight and that. Commission includes all the counties in the watershed, so Alpine, Douglas, Carson, Lyon, Churchill and Story. It also includes a conservation district, state, federal, um, local entities. And so the original plan was created after the ninety-seven floods. The CRC was, um, formulated at that time. Uh, and they made this plan to look at flooding from a holistic point of view. Basically. Floods don't respect county boundaries. And so this plan, uh, reaches across all of those. Next slide. Um. So the original plan was adopted, it was created in two thousand eight and it was adopted by the five counties along the river. And then subsequently, the two thousand thirteen update was adopted and then the two thousand, um, eighteen revision was adopted. And so this plan is an update. And so why do we do this every five years? Well, it basically helps to, um. In the plan, there is a list of potential projects that we can apply for, for what's called, uh, community. Uh, cooperative technical partners grants from FEMA's and so their studies and we actually work with county staff, kind of the way we do it is. Um, we work with the staff to identify potential projects. And then they become the technical lead and we just do the grant management. And so some of the projects we've done are the area drainage master plans all along the highway fifty cord where we're currently, um, doing a, um. Study to look at potentially upsizing some drainage in North Dayton. And so this plan, uh, contains suggested actions. It documents county progress on those suggested actions. And then it lays out those potential projects in the future. And then it serves as a guideline for floodplain management. Nothing in this plan says that the county has to do anything. It's just a guideline of these are some good practices in order to reduce flood risks. And costs and so this document is referenced in Lyon County's Hazard Mitigation Plans. Um, it's also in, um, I know it's in Carson City's master plan, I believe it's in Lyon County's and it's also in Carson River. Master plan document, next slide please. So despite the fact that we live in a high desert, um, river and alluvial fan or flash flooding. Can occur any day of year in the Carson River watershed. And, um, this, these slides, uh. Just shows some historical flooding that has occurred, we have more. Um, that have occurred in Lyon County. Um, so one of the things this plan does is try to get folks to think about water before it floods. Um, this plan is only as good as it is implemented by the county. And, um, it becomes a larger problem, the more development there is. Um, in floodplain areas, alluvial fans, channels, um, elevated roadways. Um, next slide please. And so these are like major riverine floods that have occurred, this doesn't even include like I know in. What, two thousand fourteen or fifteen? North Dayton in story and Lyon County flooded, it cost both counties a million dollars from one fifteen minute storm. And that was just to clear the roads and the drainage ditches and so. One of the things we try to do, um, in this plan is. You know, map places it floods to inform. Community developments so that they can know where water is and the best. And least expensive way to deal with flooding is to not build things where it floods and so we try to. Um, provide those maps, next slide please. And so here, as you see, um, rivers and channels, alluvial fan channels also want to migrate all over the place and so one of the. Things next slide please are click. Um, so this regional approach to floodplain management kind of considers not just the river channel, but also the meander belt. And it, it, one core item is that we try to work to protect floodplains from development. And, um. Not that I'm anti-development, my husband has sold construction equipment my whole, uh, our whole marriage. And but just to be thoughtful about it and to think about, okay, if we build things next to the river, it's going to flood as sadly we saw in Texas, that's. Just been so terrible as a floodplain manager. We are also horrified by that. Um. And so what we do in this plan is to try to reduce and avoid flood damage impacts to people. To structures. Um, because you know, you can't. It costs six times as much once you build things in the floodplain, go ahead. Please. So we kind of, our work, we sort of divided in these baskets. Um, we talk about that living river approach, which is, you know, maintaining those meander belts in the river. It protects water quality, um, provides wildlife habitat. Um, in Carson City, they conserve those areas along the river and now people come. And live in Carson City just to enjoy the community. Next slide please. Keep going. So the Carson River Coalition main message, um, has been since its outset in two thousand. Well, nineteen ninety eight, um, and then the Carson River Coalition, the main message has always been to protect the floodplain from future development. Because you can't go backwards. Once a house is built somewhere, it's going to flood. Um, it becomes exponentially expensive. Um, we also support. Um, conserving agricultural lands. Um, because not only do they, um, store floodwater, they also recharge the groundwater. And they help filter pollutants and that's a message that we take across all. Um, avenues, next slide please. I better get back to my notes, otherwise I tend to ramble on. Here's a picture, um, this happened, just a little flash slide in Carson City, my husband snapped this picture across from the B M B. So this just kind of lays out the, the eight different categories of, um, suggested actions. And so we do this because the more that you as a county can implement these steps, the less it's going to cost. In the long run and so underneath these eight. Categories of suggested actions, we have forty nine of those actions. Which we encourage the counties to think about and consider. Um, when moving forward in their planning processes, but as I said, they're just suggested they're not mandatory. But it kind of helps, um, support the counties to be thoughtful. And, um, think about these things before disaster hits, next slide. And you will, this happened in North Dayton Valley in two thousand fourteen, fifteen timeframe. Um, I won't bore you with the changes and additions, it was in the, um, agenda letter. Um, but you know, we did some editing, we did expand the stormwater sections and we added a new section and. That was based on interviews of all the county emergency managers. Cause we started to have conversations with them about what are the barriers to mitigation? That we face and, and so we put those in that section five. And the idea is that we're going to try to dig a little deeper. Uh, one of the things we try to do at C W S D. Is work together with rural counties and try to. Um, strengthen our ability to get funding to, um. You know, by working in partnership, we can get more done and hopefully get more funding. And. So yeah, next slide, uh, this happened at Casino Fandango while people were, um, in the movie theater. And my coworker just happened to be going for a movie. And this is, um, this is more of an urban flooding issue that was caused by building. A brick wall, they had a, a luvial fan channel, a brick wall and a little tiny pipe. And, uh, and so just, you know, those things slip through the cracks, but. If we can talk about them and try to figure out ways to be thoughtful about. Flooding before it happens and so next slide. Yeah, that's it, I guess. Thank you for all your help. And, um, for listening to this, thanks Gavin and the staff of Lyon County for reviewing your sections and, and the document. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Jones, with all their, um, recommendations, do you track? How many of those the counties actually implement after you've gone through all this work?
Yes, three, five years, um, so let me see, in appendix. E is updated county progress on suggested actions. And so I don't know if people have access to that, but it's in the length online. And so basically we track, um, what they have done. Um, I think a big part of what Lyon County's been doing is really trying to map and identify where it floods. Um, C W S D beca- because we get FEMA funding, we were able to also help fund the Walker River flood risk analysis, even though it's. Outside of our watershed. And so sometimes the first step in funding, um, if FEMA is still around. But it also helps with like the Army Corps of Engineers is just to know where it floods, so I think Lyon County is in a position of. Just trying to figure out what they're dealing with. Um, and once like you have those area drainage master plans in place. You can then, um, apply them to future developments so that at least when things get built, it considers that. Because if you, as a county, get stuck with a subdivision that gets flooded, the county doesn't have the option of saying. Well, sorry, we don't have the money to clear your drains or streets from the two feet of mud that just came down. So. So yeah, so we track those and then we also, the counties also identify future projects that could. So our funding is mainly studies, but if. We can pay for like the stage coat area drainage master plan costs three hundred thousand dollars, so we were able, it's basically a pass through grant. And so if we can pay for. Get that grant from FEMA and go through all the rigmarole to do that and then track it and then the county just has to come in and ground truth it, make sure it's. Providing the information they need. Then it kind of helps the county from a staffing point of view and information point of view. So yeah, that's kind of how we try to work it.
Mr. Allen?
Thanks. Uh, I would think that the important thing is to prevent flooding and, you know, and I like the idea that you've got all of the entities that are. Impacted by this waterway, this watershed. To have input into this whole process and you know, uh, to look at their responsibilities. With regard to, you know, if a flood happens, what do we do? You know, to get them to really think about it, you know, because. Having lived awhile, um, you know, I see hurricanes happen over and over in the same areas, they continue to rebuild in those same areas.
Right.
You know, and the funding affects everybody, the same thing with, say, you know, the hurricanes, uh, tornadoes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, flooding, all of those things, you need to, you know. People need to really look at. Uh, how can we? Prevent it, you know, if it does happen, how can we give warning, you know, in the, you know, to prevent? That, you know, but I, I would think that the important thing is to prevent flooding.
I definitely agree. Um, one of the things I've been thinking a lot about is that. Um, you know, I consider myself personally responsible, if any disaster hit, I could withstand it, whether it was job loss. Um, losing our house. And I feel like that's something, uh, you know, being a native Nevadan and having that Nevada grit that says. I'm going to be personally responsible. I would love to see that and it has been translated to the counties saying, okay, we are going to try to move forward. In a position where we can, um. Alleviate that kind of flooding, you know, there's always the balance between property rights and. You know, we certainly don't want to take property, anything like that, but, um, like I know in Story County. They just say when somebody wants to build a shed, hey, you know, let's look at this map, we also created a, a web viewer so folks can. Look at where it floods, so hey, you want to build a shed right there, well, you can. There's nothing in our code that says you can't, but look, you're in this flood channel, so if you move it over here on this corner of your property, then you're gonna. Not impede those flows or move worse, move them to somewhere it's going to flood, so definitely. Because the cost of building. Um. When buildings are destroyed or people worse are hurt is just. You know, there, you can't really. Um.
Put a cost on.
Put a cost to it, I mean. Yeah. So, so yeah, so we're hoping that you will send it to the commissioners for adoption. And making a re- recommendation to do so.
Notice that a comment too, I mean, you can't turn on the news or look at social media without seeing this Texas disaster. But the other thing that I've seen that's the worst part of it is. The elected officials down there had an opportunity not too long ago in the past. To do some things about mitigation or just this kind of thing like putting in sirens and all, and they voted no.
It's so hard because, you know, we face the same thing in our watershed, Douglas County is working hard to try to pass a stormwater. Tax and, you know, it's really hard to pass a tax in rural counties. And, um, you know, so it's always a balance of, you know, counties have to. Do what they can with what they've got. Um, but at the same time, things cost money and. It's so hard. You know, so. Anyway, yeah. I, I just am heartbroken for all of my. You know, the thing about floods is they can happen anywhere at any time and so, you know, you can't. If you tried to design. For a flood like happen in Texas, it would cost so much that, you know, so it's always this balancing act of trying to.
No, that's the point, it, it does cost money for mitigation, but it'll always cost more to clean the disaster.
Exponentially more, yeah. Yeah, so anyway. Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioner? Go to public comment, I mean. Seeing none here in the chamber and. I think that's a cursor.
Oh, it is.
It has to be a yellow hand. Okay, seeing none online, I'm willing to entertain a motion, I'll make a motion. Okay. Motion to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. To approve the adoption of the twenty twenty five Carson River. Floodplain Management Plan.
Second.
Okay, we'll motion in a second, any further commission discussion? Before you vote, we got a call for the vote, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Or abstaining?
Yeah.
Hearing none, say that passes six to zero as well. And item eight B is for discussion only, Community Development Director, comments and updates.
No. Okay. Oh, so in the morning, good morning.
And I apologize if I should have called on you first on the last item, but she was on her, on the list.
No worries, it all went down.
Okay.
Um. Gavin Anderson, Lyon County Community Development Director for the record, um, no major updates at this time. Um, glad to see everyone, uh, got their packets, um, early, um, especially with the large amount of information, uh, that we'll ask if you, we can have. The, the Carson River Floodplain Management Plan, um. Backup back, uh, that way we can save some trees' lives and put those in board packets. Uh, don't worry if you, you made notes, uh, we can, you know, uh, reprint those pages as necessary.
Okay.
Other than that, available to answer any question.
You have a good.
I did, I wonder, I did have a comment yesterday when I was talking to Gavin, um. Is there any way we could get some more information, I don't know if it needs to be an agenda request about the N M D A relationship with Lyon County? I know if you go to the website, um. At the Lyon County website, Community Development, I thought I would see you and I don't, I just see a link to N M D A, so I was hoping maybe we as. Plan Commission could get some more information.
Absolutely.
Is there, I, I don't know what their, um, reporting structure is, do they give a quote for, you know, what kind of projects have they recommended over the last few years? What projects have we gone and helped with, I was just curious, I think that would be a helpful tool for us.
Absolutely, uh, we can work with, uh, N M D A County Manager's Office and, um. Provide, whether it's a presentation or a report to, um, the commission.
So we'll consider that an agenda request for, um, item nine.
Absolutely correct.
That.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to item nine, Commissioner's comments and agenda requests. In addition to the one we already have. Nobody has a comment, all right? And it takes us to item ten, glasses on. Public participation, no action will be taken on any item unless it, until it is property agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission. But not on items appearing on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes for person or topic and will not be restricted based on viewpoint. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has. Been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Anyone? Wanting to do public comment? Seeing none here and no hands raised online. I'll say there aren't. It's just item eleven, adjournment. It's just item eleven adjournment. And so I will say the meeting is adjourned at eleven forty two A M. Thank you, everybody.